Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. May I have an approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor here.
I have to do that.
All right, moving on to presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. Can we have Libby, our town manager, come up for our presentation on the Nantucket budget for fiscal year 2018?
Shall we sit down some?
Are you going to have the slideshow?
Um, I am. Do I?
Yeah, I'm going to give you an introduction first and then we're going to get into the slideshow.
Okay.
If that's okay.
And the mics are just for the TV audience.
Okay, not projecting.
Not projecting.
Okay.
I think we're fine here unless you have a hard time seeing, but we have our presentations well right in front of us, so thank you.
We gave this presentation to the Board of Selectmen at their meeting last Wednesday, the 14th, so we'll try to be a little more abbreviated in some of the town administration items because I know you're more interested in your items as opposed to ours, but we thought it would be very helpful to give you a general overview of this budget. Section 4.2D3 of the town charter requires the town manager to prepare and submit to the Board of Selectmen an annual operating budget. The budget development process for this fiscal year has included a review of revenue and expense projections to the Board of Selectmen. We did that in September. We subsequently issued fiscal '18 budget instructions to all of the town departments, including the school. Departments generally are instructed to prepare operating budgets that are level-funded with the exception of small line item increases and what we call expense increase requests. Expense increase requests are items between $2,500 and $50,000, which, one, have been requested by the Board of Selectmen or town administration; two, are documented new legal mandates, requirements, contractual or other required increases; three, would provide an immediate documented cost savings to the town; four, is a program or service that is already underway that may have started mid-fiscal year and is approved by town administration or the Board. Expense increase may be new expense items, personnel, one-time or recurring items, or new or expanded programs. We've developed some criteria for our recommendations for the expense increase requests. First, they are organized into specific categories, and the categories are operational efficiencies, public safety, maintenance and infrastructure improvements, employee classification, consistency, increase in seasonal demands, contractual increases, and legal mandates. We then prioritize the requests into one of three tiers. Tier one are items which we believe must be done in the coming fiscal year in order to accomplish a specific mandate, goal, or objective or requirement. Tier two items are necessary but could be done in the next fiscal year. Tier three items are sort of nice-to-have items but could be done in a future fiscal year. We've reviewed all line items and all expense increase requests with all departments. We received 31 excluding the school, 31 personnel-related requests totaling $1.7 million. We are recommending $460,000 worth of those personnel requests for town departments. Of the 35 operating expense-related requests that we received, those totaled $1.9 million. We're recommending $1.5 million of the $1.9. $900,000 of the $1.5 is comprised of three items. We have a lot of attachments to this presentation. We have a budget narrative, which is rather lengthy. We won't go through that with you tonight. We have an appendix, which contains a lot of supporting information. We won't go through that tonight. All of the documents are posted to the town website. They'll be updated as needed. Our overall outlook for fiscal '18 is based on local indicators, including building permits, real estate sales, rooms and meals tax. These all appear strong. Nationally, obviously, there is some uncertainty. We are watching carefully through news and economic reports, and we have what we call our mini-watch report. That is a report that's been developed by our budget analyst, Julia Lindner, to monitor and track a variety of economic indicators. We believe there is a need to be cautious with the fiscal '18 budget, yet we also recognize the value of expenditures that strengthen the town's current infrastructure as well as certain staffing demands to meet the needs of the community. Our objectives for the fiscal '18 budget include keeping the operating budget within projected revenue. That's been an important mandate from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. We need to address legal mandates and needs that we have seen expressed through the Board and/or administration operations, and we would really encourage maintaining some flexibility with the levy limit and use of free cash with the budget. In other words, we are trying not to spend all of our projected revenue. Brian, our finance director, is going to start out with an overview of the financial projections and details on the funding sources. I'll take us through a quick overview of our requests and how our objectives for fiscal '18 will be met, but believe me, I won't take as long as I did at the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. So as Libby said, I'll take you through the revenue and some of the other pieces of the budget, and then she'll take you through the more fun stuff. So when we started the budget process, as we worked through it, we determined that we would be able to raise through all various sources $93,485,000. When we finally presented the budget last week to the Selectmen, it was a recommendation that the budget be $93,176,494, which as of last week would have left us $308,000 under the levy limit, but I can tell you, based on discussions last week, discussions with the Capcom and FinCom, the $300,000 is in jeopardy of not existing. So we are essentially going to be right at the levy limit, potentially, all things remaining equal. So this next slide shows you what we presented last year in fiscal 2017, which was revenue of $86.84 million. Three million dollars this year. This sheet shows $93,176,494. The revenue is back down to present to the balanced budget and ties to the expenditures of $93,176. That's a 7.3% increase over last year's projected budget revenue when we were here presenting. Last year in '17, it was about a 5.3% increase, if I remember correctly. Some of the big drivers is there's $2.1 million for school borrowing in the real estate, the property tax line for the debt exclusion for the new elementary, for the new intermediate school. We have raised rooms and meals tax by about 14% based on current trends. I will say, even though this number of 3.9 is slightly less than we've collected, it's a number that we feel reasonably confident in and would not be comfortable raising it any higher than what is there at this point. So we've created this graph to kind of show everybody graphically where some of the largest drivers are. Obviously, property tax makes up about 84% of our revenue collections. State aid is actually 3.3 million, which is about 4%. We've also, just so everybody is aware, in this budget, we have level-funded state aid at what we currently receive on the cherry sheet for fiscal '17. We feel that that's a pretty conservative estimate. We're not entirely sure what's going to happen at the state level. I'm sure everybody's heard the governor's cut $98 million from the budget and some other things that have happened, and they're still arguing over what their revenue increase is going to look like. So while I don't expect a cut, I'm not entirely sure we're going to get any more this year. We've then graphically pieced out all of the expenditures from the first page just to show you basically how all of this breaks down. Now we'll kind of go through some of the major categories in the general fund. As Libby said, within the town operational expenses, which are up to, are projected to be $8.038 million, which is 15.7%, but $1.18 million of expense increase included in that number of eight million. Town salaries projected to be $18,393,000. Of that, there's $349,000 of new positions within that budget. The school is $5.1 for operational expenses, which has $202,000 of EIRs included in that. The school salaries, we've actually shown everything in error of 1197. That's all not new positions. That was inadvertently added altogether there. So that's not all new positions, which I'm sure the school department's already seen as well. So moving on to the fixed costs. Health insurance is projected at an 8.5% increase. Our health insurance consultant was in last week and gave a presentation on health insurance where we're trending right now. Prescription drug uses, utilization is up, and right now, we're projecting 8.5% increase in that line. General insurance, we're not actually projecting to change from the prior budget, but we are expecting potential decrease based on where it ended up right now, what we paid this year. We're still working with our consultant to make sure that we can budget or plan for a potential increase. So debt services, $8,522,000, which is simply the established amortization schedule. And as I noted on the revenue side, that does include a $2.1 million payment. We permanently borrowed $35 million of the authorized school funding prior to all of the interest rate upheaval, so we actually kind of lucked out with that. Retirement, we're projecting an 8.5% increase, but we're also expecting that that will be here this week. Hopefully, the assessment will be here this week, so that number is still somewhat of a relative unknown, but we do not believe it'll be any more than what we've projected there. Enterprise fund subsidies, we've projected only a 1.6% increase because we are actually going to fund a little bit more of that through the Our Island Home retained earnings this General fund appropriations, which are usually below the line, health and human services, we have not projected an increase above the $400,000 that was recommended and approved at town meeting last year. County assessment, we're recommending the same $170,000 again this year. Reserve fund, the same $500,000 that we appropriate annually at annual town meeting. Unpaid bills, $25,000, which is consistent with last year. Other post-employment benefits, we've also recommended another $500,000 to continue our progress in starting to fund that number. That's no change over last year. Cherry sheet charges, which are the municipal offsets, the largest one that we have is to the NRTA. We have budgeted and projected that they'll remain relatively flat as compared to what's on the cherry sheet this year, which is a small increase over last year. Community school, the same $465,000 that was budgeted and voted at town meeting last year, and then minimum capital funding is $820,000. So the expense increase request, excuse me, totaled $3.6 million. We've recommended $1.9 million of that, with one-time being $1,180,000 and ongoing be $769,000. They're funded from various available sources, which we'll discuss on the next page here. So the tax levy and other general revenues would, we would fund with $614,000. Free cash, we're using $1.18 million to fund all the one-time expenses and one-time expense increase requests. So, and just to give you kind of a couple of examples of those, there's a state mandated revaluation that must occur. It has changed to every five years, but with the municipal modernization in that bill, excuse me, but we missed out on that just barely because ours is actually due in '19 and you actually have to start it in '18 so it can be certified when you set the fiscal '19 tax rate, and that's estimated to be about $200,000 just for that item alone. There's a half-million-dollar recommendation for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in there as well. Other funds or anything outside of the general fund, which we have identified, $154,000 that we could fund from there. Those funding is the Cape and Island License Plate Fund for $25,000, which is a contribution to the Fast Ferry. Beach Improvement Revolver for $58,000. There's some increased inspection time, which for the Board of Public Health, so we, and we can fund that through the Septic Inspection Revolver. And then there's a position in the Sewer Enterprise Fund that was funded through the expense increase request, and that will come exclusively out of the Sewer Enterprise. Free cash was certified as of July 1st in the amount of $6,642,000. I do want to caution everybody that I don't believe that the number will be this high next year because within that $6,642,000 is approximately $900,000 reimbursement from the federal government for damage to the town pier during winter storm Juneau. So that increase is one-time. Expense increase request in one-time is $1.2 million. Town and school capital projects, which have gone through Capcom and were presented to FinCom last night, $3.6 million. This number's actually slightly changed based on some recommendations that Capcom made. And then we have some potential issues in the solid waste budget for fiscal 2017, and because the tax rate is set, we would have to identify other funding sources to fund them at town meeting if they do come to fruition, and we've reserved $1.5 million of free cash to potentially cover those. So based on this projection presented to the Selectmen last week, this would leave us with $250,000 in free cash unallocated and available to roll over into next year. And this is where I will turn it over, back over to the town manager.
I'm going to really move through this because I know you guys probably have a lot of other items on your agenda. The administration and Board of Selectmen goals and priorities for fiscal 2018 are listed here. I mentioned some of them in the intro. Investment in infrastructure and facilities is important. Staffing issues, water quality is going to be a significant item. Health insurance cost mitigation, that involves the town and the school, obviously. We had an annual review by our health insurance consultant at last week's meeting, and there are, as I'm sure you know, limited ways in which to realize savings in health insurance without collective bargaining. And one of the most significant savings at this point looks to be the elimination of one of the offered plans called Master Medical. It's a very, very expensive plan. However, it does require bargaining, and we've really not gotten anywhere at all with any of the unions on that, although we are in negotiations now, so perhaps something might happen. We're also looking at some other options that are available under Mass General Law. We're looking to hopefully start, at least start, the development of a strategic plan, which is scheduled for later in fiscal '17. We have some initiatives, needs, and goals that we would be addressing with our budget recommendations. They're all listed here. One of our bigger items is a request for a staffing study that would look at how the town has grown within the last five to 10 years. We aren't really very convinced that we've kept up with our growth in terms of a number of town services, but sometimes an outside set of eyes and analysis can help. So anyway, those are all of our items listed there. We do a number of efforts on an ongoing basis to reduce expenses and increase efficiency and transparency. They're all listed here. I'm sure the school does a lot of similar items. We have some outstanding items and current unknowns. The strategic plan is listed on here because we're just not sure what will come out of that. Probably, maybe not for fiscal '18, but we're not quite certain about that. We have had some discussion about potential future tax overrides in connection with Our Island Home, the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, both of which require general fund subsidies. Collective bargaining isn't unknown right now. All of the town unions are in negotiations, and I know that the teachers and maybe some other school unions are in negotiations as well, and we hope that those will be concluded in time for town meeting, but quite frankly, we're not entirely certain about that. State aid, as the finance director mentioned, there may or may not be an impact on state aid. We hope not, so we're level-funding that going into fiscal '18. Chapter 90, this is for town roadwork. We won't have that number until February or March. Health insurance, as I mentioned. And the citizen warrant articles, none of the warrant articles specify any particular dollar amount, but some of them might have a potential cost increase, which has not been analyzed at this point. There's a couple of other things that have come up since, as you all may or may not know, we are starting to discuss a project called Harbor Place, which is formerly known as Wilk Square. It's the area where the former, well, the current fuel tank farm is and the downtown Stop &amp; Shop. And the owners have gotten together and started talking, the owners of all of that is private property. They've started talking to the town about the possibility of redevelopment options in that area, and the board talked about the possibility of engaging a consultant to help us through that process. So that may or may not be an additional item. Next steps in the budget process, we are obviously here tonight with you. On January 4th, the Board of Selectmen will have a public hearing. This is an annual public hearing pertaining to the budget, and they will hopefully adopt a recommended budget that will then be forwarded to the Finance Committee. We'll give them a presentation very similar to this on or about January 9th, and then we have some review of other budgets throughout January, February, and March, and it all leads up to annual town meeting, which is scheduled for Saturday, April 1st. I'd really like to take the opportunity to thank the superintendent and his staff, particularly Martin, with their help in this process. I think we're really fortunate to have such a good working relationship with each other. As I'm sure you know, there's a lot of towns and schools that don't get along as well as we do, so I think we're really lucky to have that, and we very much appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Libby, do you mind if I just ask if there are any questions?
Oh, yeah, not at all.
Zona? Oh, sorry. No questions. Bye.
I will, if nobody else is. Don't honor to be able to walk away without a question. She'd be disappointed.
It's better to be soft.
No, I think one of the things that I've heard from the school committee was the discussion of one of the, or two positions that you've talked about, one being the SRO for the elementary intermediate school, and I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that.
Thank you. I should have mentioned that. We do have that position in the general fund budget. It's in the police department budget, and we've talked a bit with the school administration about that position, and we, I think, agree that it's important to fund it for fiscal '18.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're very thankful for that.
It's very important and very grateful. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for working with us on it.
The other question, Libby, you had considered, I believe, a new position for records requests.
Yep.
And I think that's something that is certainly impacting the school and town alike with the change in the law.
We have proposed a new position to handle records, to help us comply with the new records management law, which goes into effect on January 1st, but there are a lot of requirements associated with it that apply to all municipal agencies, and we actually are trying to get that position fully funded in our budget this year. I'm not sure if we're going to totally be able to achieve that, but we have hired a position in our office, put out there and engaged somebody to fill the position in our office to help start doing that, and as we go forward, I think we're going to be looking at the compensation level of the position, but I think the idea is to really centrally coordinate a lot of these, a lot of the requests that come in, and I'm sure we'll be working with you on whatever comes in with you because if there's a complaint going forward or some kind of non-compliance with the law, there are fines that's part of the new law, and they include attorney's fees and actual penalty fees and other unpleasant things that we'd like to avoid.
Thank you. Melissa, do you have any questions or comments? Pauline? All right. Thank you very, very much, Libby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All right, moving on to FY 2018 budget development for the Nantucket Elementary School. Mrs. Kish.
So if I could just jump in before Kim starts, you have a lot of supporting documentation in your packets that I know that you've gone through and reviewed. We are not going to go through all of those accounts line by line, but it is supporting information, and we'll hit the highlights and then take any questions that you might have on any of the budgets, if that's...
Perfect. Thank you.
The pleasure of the school committee.
So I just want to start with our new pictures, and these pictures are things that we do traditionally and then a new event that we added this year. So it's certainly welcoming our kindergarten students in, decorating the trees downtown. We had a beautiful day to do that this year. Guest Reader Day, bottom right, and over on the bottom left is Math Night, which was new this year.
Thank you.
And for the elementary school, and I was sort of hoping the superintendent would address this, but I'm happy to, this budget is for Nantucket Elementary School in totality. Martin and I have had some preliminary conversations. We will need to be splitting this as we open the new intermediate school. We have done some preliminary work to be ready for that. We have some specials teachers who only work with third, fourth, and fifth grade, so they'll be ready to make that transition over along with our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, potentially. And so for NES, just the elementary school, we are not asking for any new positions. Before I address the new positions we are asking for, which are directly related to the intermediate school, I would say that you could certainly go through our numbers. Martin was terrific and super helpful with me, along with my purchasing administrative assistant, where we went back through where we spent money, and then we made sure that our lines reflected that. So I know you've asked in the past about reducing the number of transfers. We don't have a significant amount of transfers, but they happen, and they could still happen. But what we tried to do is prevent that by putting the money where we spend the money. So we kept all of those numbers the same as far as total goes, but we may have put more in supplies and less in books or the reverse. The other addition that I would highlight in here is for our third, fourth, and fifth grade trips. My first year, there was no money for the field trips in the budget, and in the six years I've been here, this is the first year that I moved some money around to increase that because certainly the Boston Museum of Science for fourth grade, Nature's Classroom for fifth grade, and the Big Plymouth trip, all those expenses have gone up, and we've maintained that for five years. So we're, we put more in each of those to minimize the number of, the dollar amount for parents in some of those cases. So if you just go back to page two, these are the only requests that we have put in. One is for the intermediate principal. It will be a luxury, I think. Well, I shouldn't say luxury because it's very necessary, but from a leadership perspective, it will make the work far more closely aligned to staff when we can cut this in half, and then that principal and associate principal will be working with the students in those testing years and really focused on that content and certainly put all their energies into improving student achievement. I should remind you that at the elementary school, we did not fill the second associate principal position, so that's rolled over, so it stays in the budget. Am I saying that correctly? Okay. We are asking for a nurse because currently we have one nurse for all of our students and a nurse TA, and we think that it would be beneficial to have a nurse over in that building and a nurse in our building, and then they can probably and hopefully be able to do the continued work that they've been doing all along, but also bump that up. And they're trying to put some health records really into our Aspen system, including health insurance, including lots of screenings that they try to do all year long. There will be a brand-new library, media center in the intermediate school, and we feel it's necessary to have someone full-time on staff in that building to support using the resources, allow for more curriculum integration, do some computer work over there as well. And then the last request is for a guidance counselor. Right now, I have two guidance counselors at the elementary school who serve the needs of 730 kids and their families, and this would allow us to get that number closer, more closely matched to what the middle school and the high school have.
So if I can just interject, that is actually, half of that would be a new position to NES because that guidance counselor will be shared. You'll have one existing at the elementary school, one at the intermediate, and one who will work between the schools to bring that, to bring that student ratio down.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Questions? Zona?
No. Thank you. Very clear.
Just a couple of questions. Just out of curiosity, will the nurses' office in both schools have a TA as well?
I was going to ask.
So they'll be positioned with two people in the office?
No, they won't. We will share the TA for when they're doing activities like, you know, height, weight...
Screenings.
Screenings, all of those things. I would expect that we would have with the proximity. If we had an emergency, we have the ability to have somebody walk across the plaza there and provide support. Someday, we may. I know Tim has expressed the desire that we would continue with the TA, but we've also made a similar move at the high school, hiring a new nurse for the middle school, and there are two nurses but no TA there now.
Well, I thought there was an assistant in the middle school.
No.
In the high school.
Two nurses.
Oh, two nurses, okay. So like on lunch breaks and breaks, there'll be somebody going in to...
They can cover.
Like the TA will go in and cover. Okay. And then just curious, on the NIS guidance or that third position floating, is a priority going to be a Spanish-speaking position, or are you not pri... are you not priority, I mean not specifying that?
You know, I think, is that a priority? Yes. I think you always look for the most qualified guidance counselor you can find, and so ideally, you would have somebody who can also speak Spanish, that would be, that would be a great addition. But if that person is far less qualified than another guidance counselor, I think you have a tough decision as a, as a principal. You know, do you value Spanish more than the skills of a counselor? But I think that would be our hope.
Because right now, do you have some, you have somebody coming in, have somebody coming in to translate?
Translate?
Thank you.
Patricia Harding is in our building, and she, we affectionately call her the Spanish principal, because she does everything: guidance counseling, nursing, translating, outreach. She does everything there is to do for our Spanish-speaking families.
She actually has a counseling background.
She does.
Yeah, she does. Okay, thank you.
Melissa? I just had a question, and this may be nudgey, but just supplies, you know, like I'm looking at the elementary school supplies budget in places where I would think of, you know, I don't know what goes in the line item of supplies, but I'm imagining you're going to need, I don't know, things. So what's included in setting up the new school, and are there additional supply costs to run the new school? I'm thinking paper products. Does that come out of the facilities budget for like toilet paper, paper towels, tissues, or is that in the school?
Some of that comes out of facilities. Obviously, if it's something that's going into the bathrooms, then that's going to come out of facilities. Remember that we have, we're budgeting now for 3, 4, 5 at the elementary school, so you're moving the 3, 4, 5 over, so, you know, a percentage of that budget will move over to the new school with those staff members.
No, I get it. I guess I'm just wondering if the demands of running the new building, aside from utility payments.
Yeah.
It strikes me that there are going to be things that are not part of the capital costs of setting up the building, are there operational expenses that I'm not, maybe we don't know enough about what they're going to look like yet?
There are a lot of things in the setup that are part of the bond for the new school.
Okay.
So a lot of things that you might be referring to will be, will come out of the...
Like a new photocopier for the front office.
Yes. Technology copiers, different things like that will be in the budget.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. What is the plan for front office staff?
So there are four in the front office right now, and two will go to the new building, and two will stay in the current building. Patricia does translation for our whole building. We anticipate we will need her to do some moving back and forth, depending. Melissa Long does purchasing, she does it for our whole building. We anticipate she will need to do that for both buildings. Jane Melville is a 12-month, so she will be year-round, and Katie Bedell is currently a 10-month. And so we'll just, we have, we have not assigned staff to anything yet. We're still working out where everyone will go in the elementary school, and then who will go over to the new school. But we anticipate two there, two at the current school.
All right, thank you. And then a computer media teacher? What are we doing about that for the new school?
I think because we're adding a librarian, we're going to be looking to the librarian to come with technology skills and work on the media, plus the fact that you have, you're moving to a one-to-one environment as well in the 3 through 5. So it becomes a little more seamless into the, into the classrooms.
Mm-hmm, hopefully.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
You have an easy report, huh?
Yeah, thanks for having me. This is relatively easy.
Thanks for having me, Peter.
And thanks to Martin for all his help assembling this, and inserting the graphs here, you can see the pie graphs. CPS's budget is 15% of the overall budget, and 97% of the CPS budget is payroll. So, you know, our goals at CPS, as outlined in our school improvement plan, are all focused on improving instruction and intervention and being innovative. And so we are hoping to be able to make some adjustments to our master schedule, and put in place interventions and extension opportunities for kids, and we think we can do all of that in a budget-neutral way, as long as we're able to maintain current staffing. So we've got a nice level of staffing for English learner, teachers of English learners, for interventions that are in place, so we're looking to just, you know, keep that and move that for, this level of staffing forward. We've worked hard to address the issue of budget transfers that you guys approve at your meetings, and so we've shifted some line items around, so you'll see some differences from last year to this, to make sure that we can minimize the amount of transfers that we'll need. So we think we've more appropriately aligned the budget into those line items. One thing that went unfilled this year is a technology integration specialist. We had that position in place, it went unfilled this year, and so that money is still in the budget, so it's just rolling over, it's not an additional request in terms of funding, it's just a, we're going to have to fill that position, because it is a need that we, that we have at the school. We are looking to fund a larger portion of the oceanography teacher salary. We've got this great partnership with the Egan Maritime Institute, and the Egan Maritime pays for a large percentage of the salary for that person, and we're looking to take on a little bit bigger piece of that salary. But other than that, no real requests for new funding.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Zona?
Pauline?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
I'm feeling a little silly.
So as Chris comes up, I'll just say, obviously, and that...
Lots of questions.
We've talked about this before. The focus this year, because we were putting a new school online, was, were those positions for the new school. We were also able to do quite a few things this past year in all three schools, to set them up for this year, knowing that we wouldn't be entertaining a lot of other requests for that. And the team has been great in understanding that and adjusting. You know, are there things that we could add and would want to add? Of course, I think, you know, if you threw that softball to any of the three principals, they could, they could hit that one. But we're in pretty good shape. Depending on the numbers, the one thing that I wanted, that I forgot to mention in Kim's report, the wild card is always, what are the kindergarten numbers going to be? So that, that budget was predicated on five kindergarten teachers, which is what we have this year. If we have six, we, sections will need to find the money for that. So I just skipped that, sorry, Kim.
Thank you. Chris, welcome.
Good evening.
Hey, Chris.
In your package, you should have, you've got quite a bit of information. Obviously, you've got the graphs that show our, the percentage from a standpoint of athletics, what the athletic budget represents in the overall school budget, and then you've got the breakdown in that. You've also got a lot of information with regards to our participation for our student athletes, and, you know, some of the achievements and accomplishments that they've had. We're not going to go through all that, that's basically put in there, so you have an idea of just exactly the volume that we're, that we're covering from a standpoint of our athletic programs. Just in touching on all this briefly, we're basically in the same position that we've been in the last eight years, where we're asking for level, level funding. Really, there are no, no increases. We have, within this budget, been able to add sports with volleyball coming in, in the last, last couple of years, volleyball now being as a, both a varsity and a JV-level sport. In this past year, we started cross-country as a club-level sport, but with both those programs, we feel that we're going to be able to make those work within the budget funds we've got supplemented by the athletic participation fees. The participation levels are important just from a standpoint of the volume that we are handling from a standpoint, not only of our students, but the, the number of contests that we're both hosting and traveling to. In the past year, we had 347 students at the high school participating, and 149 at the middle school. We're looking at what we think will probably be about a 4% to 5% increase in that number in, in this fiscal year. With game contests, the past year, we played close to 500, 500 contests between all our MPS athletic teams. 494 is the actual, actual number. 246 of those were at home, 248 were away. Both involve expenses, whether we're home or away. Obviously, at home, and there is a hidden cost there, that we do busing when we, when we get involved in a home game, because we are paying for local busing to transport teams to and from the ferry, and obviously, we have our officials' costs there. And when we go away, we have double busing, because we have busing our kids down to the boat, and then we have busing on the other side as well. So that's just a breakdown, and as far as the, the actual number of games, number of contests that we're participating, and we will see a slight increase in that with cross, cross-country coming on, coming on board. The athletic participation fees are huge from a standpoint of supplementing our budget and making that work, and annually, we've been right at about $95,000 from a standpoint of what we've, what we've been able to bring in through that program. That's helped us to be able to run, manage, and everything, everything that we do without having to ask for any increases to the budget.
Chris, you haven't, you haven't increased those impact fees, though. Maybe you could speak to that, that I know.
No, the, the participation fees have stayed at the, at the same level since we, since we put them in place, which was back in 2009. And just as a comparison, and I just pulled up one high school, Manchester Essex High School, their athletic participation fees are much, much higher than what we have. They go $400 for the first sport, for anybody that's playing two sports, it's $650, for somebody playing a third sport, it's $750. At the middle school level, $320 for the first sport, 520 if they're playing two, 600 if they're playing three. There are a lot of schools in the state of Massachusetts that use participation fees in order to help them sustain and carry their, their athletic programs.
Would you, would you, I'm sorry, John.
That's okay, Melissa, do you have a question or comment?
I do.
A legitimate one.
Sorry, I didn't...
Would you say that some of our ability to keep those participation fees low is because of the extraordinary efforts of our booster club?
I would definitely, the booster club is, is definitely a help to our program. The booster club primarily funds what we would call capital projects as far as our, our teams go. So when one of our athletic teams comes up with something that they really feel they need in the way of equipment, supplies, that's where the booster club will, will jump in.
Right, which obviously would have an impact on our budget if we were having to carry some of the full weight of those requests, for sure.
I think the other thing is just the numbers that we have, the participation numbers that we've got. Obviously, the more people you have, the more fees you're collecting, and, you know, the higher that figure goes.
I have one other question. I was just scanning the back, and I noticed that travel was really low, and obviously, transportation is a higher number. What's the, what's the categorical difference between transportation and travel?
The transportation is really a professional services and transportation account, and it covers a lot of different items. It, it covers our land and sea travel, it covers our busing and our ferry service, but it also covers our officials' fees. The travel category really just boils down to athletic department traveling, and, and that type of, that type of expense. Any of the professional services, such as ambulance details and that type of thing, are all coming out of that, that transportation account, so that's why that figure is higher.
And I just want to say that I'm incredibly grateful to the steamship and the High Line. I think that for years, they've offered us reduced fares for our athletic teams and make our sports programs possible to, to be able to get all those kids. I mean, we've all been on boats where you have one or two teams, and it's, I think, because of their generosity that we're able to do that.
Absolutely. Both of those boat lines are very generous, not only to the schools, but to a lot of other different organizations on the island, and they make it possible for our kids to be able to do a lot of things.
Yeah.
Thank you. Zona, any questions?
Is there, maybe this is a question for Martin. Is there a reason why those two travels are broken out separately? I mean, because it seems like it's overlapped. So I'm just curious as to why, you know, it warrants breaking out that 4%.
My guess would be, I'm going to jump in, Martin, and you can rescue me if I'm wrong, that I guess it would be pretty much for our staff. So when Chris has to go to an athletic director's meeting, or coaches have to go to a meeting, or there's professional development, it would come out of the travel, whereas anything contracted for a bus company, the ferry, flights for your, for your referees would come out of the transportation. A legitimate one. Would you say that some of our ability to keep those participation fees low is because of the extraordinary efforts of our booster club?
I would definitely, the booster club is definitely a help to our program. The booster club primarily funds what we would call capital projects as far as our teams go. So when one of our athletic teams comes up with something that they really feel they need in the way of equipment supplies, that's where the booster club will jump in.
Which obviously would have an impact on our budget if we were having to carry some of the full weight of those requests, for sure.
I think the other thing is just the numbers that we have, the participation numbers that we've got. Obviously, the more people you have, the more fees you're collecting, and the higher that figure goes.
I have one other question. I was just scanning the back, and I noticed that travel was really low, and obviously transportation is a higher number. What's the categorical difference between transportation?
The transportation is really a professional services and transportation account, and it covers a lot of different items. It covers our land and sea travel, it covers our busing and our ferry service, but it also covers our officials' fees. The travel category really just boils down to athletic department traveling and that type of expense. Any of the professional services such as ambulance details and that type of thing are all coming out of that transportation account, so that's why that figure is higher.
I just want to say that I'm incredibly grateful to the steamship and the High Line. I think that for years, they've offered us reduced fares for our athletic teams and make our sports programs possible to be able to get all those kids. I mean, we've all been on boats where you have one or two teams, and it's, I think, because of their generosity that we're able to do that.
Absolutely. Both of those boat lines are very generous, not only to the schools, but to a lot of other different organizations on the island, and they make it possible for our kids to be able to do a lot of things.
Yeah. Thank you. Zona, any questions?
Is there, maybe this is a question for Martin. Is there a reason why those two travels are broken out separately? I mean, because it seems like it's overlapped. So I'm just curious as to why, you know, it warrants breaking out that four percent.
My guess would be, I'm going to jump in, Martin, and you can rescue me if I'm wrong, that I guess it would be pretty much for our staff. So when Chris has to go to an athletic director's meeting, or coaches have to go to a meeting, or there's professional development, it would come out of the travel. Whereas anything contracted for a bus company, the ferry, flights for your referees would come out of the transportation.
So maybe officials should be moved down to the, because it says officials here, so that's what makes me think it's a little overlapping, possibly.
The travel category used to be a larger line item back in the days when we used air travel a lot more. We very seldom use air travel anymore. Martin and I have worked to, again, adjust some of the light on, so we reduce that amount. And that amount typically, there will be a surplus in there that will get transferred annually. We've brought that down more this year.
As long as you transfer within your athletics department.
Correct. Definitely transferred within the athletics department.
As long as you transfer to cheerleading, you'll be fine.
Zona?
I'd like to add, it's also for reporting purposes.
That's what I figured.
Reporting purposes, where we do the end-of-year report, the description of matches, the expense of the end-of-year report, it's more specific, so that's why.
Okay. Thank you.
Zona? I mean, sorry, Pauline. Zona, stop talking, Pauline.
That was a compliment.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Sorry. I have a question. As our class sizes increase and participation rates increase, what is the plan moving forward? How do other districts handle large participation rates for same sports? Or do you start adding another team? Do you start adding extra sports, other options?
Those are all options. You can, I mean, you can add sports to a point, but you have to be careful from a standpoint of watering down your athletic base to the point where you're no longer competitive with the different teams you get. You know, there is a point, and we have gotten to that point with the number of our sports, where we're using that nasty word, cuts. And that's not a bad thing, because the world's full of competition, and it's okay for kids to learn about that. We try not to do that at any of the sub-varsity levels. That would be more of a varsity-level decision. The only other way to accommodate greater numbers is to add more levels to those programs. And I really think, A, I don't think we have the numbers to sustain, say, at the high school, three levels of a program, which would be a freshman team, junior varsity team, varsity team. That is an avenue that could be explored, but that gets into some fairly significant budget dollars, and I just, I don't think we're ready for that at this point. I mean, the numbers are increasing, but at this point, we've been able to handle things. As we look at new sports, we also try to make sure that if we're adding a sport, it's not going to impact any of the sports programs that we already have in place. Those are all options. I think at this point, I think we're at a good balance, and we're certainly keeping an eye on it.
Thank you.
If I may add, the other thing that you look at is intramurals. And whether they are school intramural, or whether they're boys' and girls' club programs, and they're pretty extensive there at the lower levels. Your question maybe speaks more to the high school numbers.
Well, and I hate to see, I hate to see students cut, because there are so many benefits to being on a sports team. Health-wise, academic-wise, you know, just the camaraderie of being on a team. I think it benefits our students in so many different ways that I hate to see students being cut because of the size, you know, because of our growing numbers. I just want to make sure that we do or have the ability to accommodate the students that want to be healthy, that want to participate, and want to be on a team.
Well, I'm glad Mike brought up the intramural base, because it is important. And just as an example, right now, we've got in our middle school basketball program, we're oversubscribed. And we've had to tell our sixth graders that we can't handle them in that program, but what we've done to help balance that is we've set up, and we're going to have this in place when everybody returns from vacation, an intramural program where the sixth graders will be able to do something here at the school.
That's great.
We keep an eye on that. We're trying to make sure. I mean, the more kids that we have involved, the better we are.
I know that's your goal, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin?
If it's okay with you, we'll start with Martin, but we'll bring Nancy up for special education, if you have questions on the ELL as well. Jeremiah is here.
Central, as you can see, is 16% of the total budget, payroll being 50% of it. Central encompasses a lot of different services. As you've probably seen from the detail, we already heard the presentation of the technology section last week. There is a special education part, there is an ELL part, there is central superintendent's office part in the budget. So several highlights here, and the tuition, despite tuition line is increasing, we discussed this, Mike mentioned it already, by $100,000. The circuit breaker this year, the projection, is $255,000 as opposed to $445 this year, so we are increasing that line in case, just to make sure we have enough to cover. Other expenses are, we work very closely with Jean Witte and Michael Horton, which I want to compliment in the curriculum office, to align budgets. Certain budgets for books were transferred to individual schools and subscription magazines as well. We created a new technology line to better describe the expenses that are being charged in the curriculum budget. So it was very, I thought it was a great collaboration on the budget to work closely, and we believe this is a fair budget. It streamlines the process of ordering and receiving certain magazines, books, book orders, and also better distributes funds within line items. The, I mean, I'm open to questions. There aren't any much changes within the budget, as you've probably seen.
All right. Great. Thank you, Martin. Do you have any questions or comments, Zona?
No. No, thank you.
Melissa? Pauline?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even though we're not finished, because we haven't done the special education piece, I want to say these are really great reports. It's a nice combination of the pie charts, the graphs, the narrative, and the spreadsheet. So thank you for that. It's very easy to understand and decipher, blah, blah, blah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Martin.
I have to credit Blenfield for that. This is, I'm just continuing his work. I inherited the great documents and great database of information, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Nancy, for your last presentation for the Nantucket Public Schools.
That is already amazing, but my name wasn't on it.
Oh, no, no. No, not that easy.
I tried to say, Nancy, you mentioned one of the articles.
I said, Martin has to do it. My name's not on there. Good evening.
Good evening.
So as you can see from the, I'll do the pie chart first. Special education services are about 21% of the overall school budget, and of that 21%, payroll is, represents the bulk of it, at just under 80%. And payroll is, from a special education standpoint, our school psychologists, speech and language therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision therapists, and contracted providers. So we have a number of staff that are considered district-wide staff and fall under that payroll. As far as our changes this year, I'll just follow up a little bit on what Martin said. Our circuit breaker funding for FY18 is reduced. Some of it for a good reason, because we've built more programs within the district and are sending fewer students out of the district, and so a lot of circuit breaker funding is predicated on out-of-district tuitions. But on the, another reason I'm concerned about that tuition line is a couple of things. We're getting reports back from a number of the schools that we use that, to anticipate tuition increases of three to five percent. So I've built that in and considered that. And we are looking at one or two critical cases now that we are maintaining in our district, but I'm not 100% confident that we will be able to continue to meet that need. And we may be looking at having to possibly send another student to an out-of-district program. And then finally, circuit breaker is something that is very contingent upon state funding. And I decided, we throw circuit breaker around a lot, and I thought I'd do a little primer this year on circuit breaker.
Thank you.
And so I guess I want some feedback about whether it makes sense, or if I can answer any questions. But, and I want you to know, it's also in district. It's not just out-of-district. So I could give you the same scenario for a student for whom we provide extraordinary services in district that might include a one-to-one TA, it might include speech, PTO, vision services. And of all of those services that we capture, and the state sets guidelines to what we can, the rates that we can claim for those services. But we continue to pay the first, the foundation amount for that, that collection of services or that tuition. We can make a claim for anything over and above, but the state sets the rate at which they will reimburse that claim. I've seen it go as low as 40%. We've seen it go as high as 72%. Based on some of the information we're getting from the state, I'm feeling for the next couple of years, probably less confident that it will be reimbursed up at that 70%. So for those reasons, we talked about it and thought we better add some funding to our tuition line to help cover some of those costs.
Thank you.
I have a quick question on the circuit breaker. Thank you so much for this. It's explained beautifully and very clearly, and I guess I'm just a little bit curious if you could add to it how the state determines that reimbursement number. I mean, obviously, it's based on their available funds, but it also varies district to district, correct? So, no? So they'll pick one amount, one percentage amount?
Percentage is the same.
Is the same for every? Gotcha.
So in this example that I gave you, I just picked the possible state reimbursement at 60%. When they choose that for a fiscal year, that's
That's it.
Every district in
Everybody.
The state. Oh, yeah, everybody gets reimbursed at the same rate.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah. And we have Operational Services Division. Jay Sullivan is the person that, working with, I guess, the executive branch, figures, actually, what they figure is how much money in totality they have to give back to districts. And then they, that's what will drive the percentage. So if they don't have much money to give back to districts, they're going to do a percentage of 40 or 50%.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like for you to take it a step further, if you don't mind. I'd like for you to paint a scenario for me of a student, given whatever the situation is, and paint for me what it costs to take care of that student based on this program.
Okay. So it ranges. I have students in programs because they require much more significant services than the example that I gave here of a student at $150,000 a year. I have students in programs that are now pushing over $200,000 a year.
What's the program?
So, for example, a program like that would be for a more significant student. So in one of the schools that I have, I'm thinking of a particular student who suffered extraordinary trauma as a very young child, and that trauma has manifested itself in pretty violent, aggressive behaviors. So despite our best efforts, at some point, we felt that for safety reasons and for the student's own ability to grow and manage some pretty extreme behaviors, that particular student needed to be in a residential program with therapeutic programming 24/7. So what that program would look like, they would be in campus housing, they go to school all day long. But a program like that, what you're going to see are the provision of psychiatric services, a lot of provisions of therapeutic services, nursing services, counseling services. So while they are getting a full academic program, there is also this increased level of services to deal with the trauma and the coping skills and the ability to re-enter, really, a mainstream community. At this point, a particular student that we have in a program such as that isn't really able to come back. We see lots of great times, and you think, wow, we're making some progress, and then you'll see some periods of very explosive behaviors. And so when you see those periods of explosive behaviors, we have to think about the safety of our students in a more mainstream class, and the safety of our teachers and everybody else. So in some cases, some students can come back, and in some cases, some students can't. Another program that might be similar to that would be a residential program for a student who might have very significant autism. So again, autism is a huge spectrum, and we are able to meet the needs of many students on the autism spectrum. But there are a few cases where a student's autism might be so significant that their cognition is compromised, their speech, their ability to even engage in your basic activities of daily living. So that program might look like lots of teaching around how to brush their teeth, how to shower, how to just, how to clothe themselves. Very often, they're nonverbal. So there are a lot of speech therapists in that program with a lot of nonverbal communication devices, nonverbal communication systems, so that that student may be being taught to use an iPad as their voice. There's also usually occupational therapy, physical therapy. And then we will also bring in other agencies, because as a student like that will age, it's unlikely that they would be receiving an accredited diploma, although they're in an academic day. And that type of student, we're probably looking to service till they're 22, and then move them into programming with Department of Developmental Services, so that they would then maybe, as an adult, be supported in a group home.
So this program, I just want to make sure it's clear, and I want to clear it up for anyone listening who's confused. So these are students that live, or were born here, or are part of our community, can't go to school here, per se, have to be, have to go elsewhere to school to meet their needs, but because they're in our school district where they live, this is the service that we could possibly offer to them as an alternative learning environment.
Yes.
Okay. And this is how we get funding for it?
It's how we get some of the funding for it, but as you can see here, that the bulk of the funding comes from the community of Nantucket and our tuition line. And circuit breaker was created to help communities offset what are extraordinary costs. But every community in the state, regardless of what community it is, always has to spend the first foundation amount, and then you're not fully reimbursed for that amount over that. You're still, the community is still incurring costs.
What happens when the foundation or tuition line runs out? Suppose you have, I don't know,
It's a good question.
10 students, and you only have 750. It's 50,000, so let's do the math.
I can give you an example, because we created a graph to show this, and we use it when we present at budget hearing or FinCom. And it shows the amount that we are budgeting, which might be 750,000, but we know that our costs for, or we're anticipating circuit breaker of 350,000, making the $1 million that we have to pay for tuition. If we don't budget enough, or if foundation, if circuit breaker comes in less, we have to fund that from elsewhere in the budget. We have a commitment.
So it's a transfer.
Exactly. We will have to make a transfer.
It's a transfer.
Back to that transfer.
Back to the transfer, yeah. I will say, though, and I make all credit to the three people sitting there in the front row, that we have made and continue to make extraordinary efforts to provide the services that kids need within our community, and everybody benefits. And making the decision to send a student out is extraordinarily And making the decision to send a student out is extraordinarily difficult and it's not, we don't arrive at it easily. It's after making every attempt. And it's the principals who work so hard to find, to help work with me to create programming in buildings, to maintain students in buildings, to allocate staff, allocate social workers. It's an incredible effort on the part of building administration and in some ways, particularly with more challenging students. They don't ever say, I want this kid out of my building. It just doesn't happen. They do everything possible to maintain a student in the building and it's only after extraordinary efforts or possibly when we really have come to the conclusion that we're just not seeing progress with a student, that we make that decision to send them out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
And just to add to Mike's point, which the budget was not always set up that way and that we've increased the appropriation for special ed tuition over the past
Three or four years, five years?
Probably five years. Yeah. Six years ago, seven years ago, we were really doing a lot of transfers out of the operating budget.
It was budgeted a much lower amount and we, Mike's done a great job with Glenn and also Martin to increase that and Nancy to increase that so that if we find ourselves in that situation, hopefully, the impact is not as significant to the overall operating budget.
Less transfers.
That's right. Thank you.
The goal is less.
Colleen, do you have any questions?
Just one question because I was just looking at this as you were speaking so specifically on out-of-school placement, was, or out-of-district placement, is the transportation. And I see where it is here in the budget, but the off-duty, is that, the off-duty salaries, is that of the individuals who are accompanying the students?
No, off-duty salaries is a little bit bigger. It's, it could be that. It could be very much that we've, I'm using that line to pay for a teaching assistant to allow students to participate in an extracurricular activity, whether that's at the high school and it's girls' softball or whether that's at nature's classroom. We had a student who has a one-to-one TA during the school day and wanted to come to the Christmas concert and needed that support in order to navigate just some of the stimulation of being in a large room, of the auditorium. So I use off-duty salaries to be able to reimburse a TA the two hours that they may use. That's a very small example. But off-duty salaries also includes tutors because it's under my umbrella for a student who may be unable to attend school because they've had surgery and they're just home recovering and we need to send tutors out to the house. It could be a student who's going through a crisis and they're home. So off-duty salaries I use to fund some of my tutoring lines for staff who may already be in the system. I have a different tutoring line for sort of outside contractors, but some of that money is for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I know. Should we give you a round of applause, Nancy? We're going to miss you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Do we want Jeremiah? Do you want to come up?
Well, okay. Come up and say that there are no additions.
Yeah, well, there might be questions. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you. Fine, thank you.
Can't find mine. Well, I know, but I was looking for the other.
This one here?
Yeah.
As I wrote in the narrative, the majority of the budget is for staff salaries. And you can see that the significant increases this year for the roll forward for the staff salaries. And I've expressed to Mr. Cozord and I believe to the school committee that I think we are finally fully staffed in the ELL department to meet the population needs.
Excellent.
That is good.
It's over 95 percent, I believe, of the ELL budget is staff-related. Other than that, it's just instructional supplies, materials books, professional development.
I have to say, I saw the projected numbers at the elementary school and there was no, you know, increase in teaching staff. That makes me a little nervous because from 2016 to 2017, it jumped up about 20 students, 21, and we added a teacher and we're projecting another 20 students, which is essentially another classroom of students. So that makes me a little nervous if we do receive an additional 20 students, being able to support them.
Well, I think the trend is that we're sort of leveling off. Those are generous sort of projections to protect ourselves, I believe, but I don't really anticipate those kind of numbers in the growth, honestly. I think we may have plateaued. We've seen certain families leave the district for a number of reasons. We've had several incoming students, but not nearly as many as we have in the past since the beginning of the year.
All right. I'm just glad we have you at the helm.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Thank you for everything. Any other questions, comments?
No, thank you, Jeremiah.
No, thank you, Jeremiah. All right, comments from the public? Moving on to votes to be taken. May I have a motion to approve fiscal 2017 contract for athletic department and first student incorporation from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a vote to approve fiscal 2017 contract for NCS and soccer superstars, July 1st, 2016 through September 15th, 2016, in the amount of $18,000?
May I ask a question on this?
Sure.
I'm just curious, there's the two contracts, one for time that's already happened and one that, for time in the future. And I'm just curious what the distinction is between the two. And we're approving the contract that already happened and we're going to approve the contract that's going to happen.
I don't think at the beginning of the year, it was projected that we're going to expand over $10,000 with the vendors.
I see.
Since the threshold has been reached, we have to do a contract
Gotcha.
by law.
Okay.
And we're doing that and now we're being provided for sold at the same
I see.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a vote to approve fiscal 2018 contract for Nantucket Community School and Soccer Superstars, July 1st, 2017 through September 15th, 2017, in the amount of $20,000?
Move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a vote to approve policy IKF amendment graduation requirements?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposed, but maybe we should mention out loud what the change is. Can you do that?
We did the last meeting.
Oh, you did?
You weren't here, but we can do that again if you'd like.
If you've done it, I'm good.
We have. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve December 6, 2016 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve transfers and invoices? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report, 2017, 2018 hiring?
Thank you. This is the time of year that we are already looking to staffing for next year. We know that we typically have some either resignations or retirements coming up and of course, we have the new positions at the intermediate school that we've already talked about. The ads for several administrative positions have been going out this week. We have the intermediate principal, which granted, hasn't been, hasn't gone through all of the budget process, but we need to get out ahead of that. And based on Libby's recommendations, I'm pretty confident that that budget will hold. After we have determined who that principal will be, we'll begin the search for the assistant principal in that school as well. But we want the principal to be a part of that search. We have a middle school, two middle school openings at this point. One is the music position. I think you may have seen that Laura Byrne is going to work for Dreamland and so we'll be looking to fill that position. And Irene Egan is retiring, has announced her retirement, so we'll be looking to fill that position. Those are the positions that we know of at this point at the middle school unless Dr. Cohen knows something I don't know. Looks like the Cheshire Cat there.
There's always a few surprises along the way.
Right. And then in addition to the intermediate principal, as John Bucky relayed, will be, begin the search to replace John Lucchini. And I certainly want to recognize and thank John for the years of service and there'll be another time to do that because he's not running out the door as Nancy is. And then in addition, we'll be looking to replace Jeremiah as he retires to Colorado at the end of this year.
Idaho.
Idaho? Okay, sorry.
We're visiting no matter where you go.
And so
Face timing.
There are going to be several key positions. And Jeremiah certainly has done a wonderful job with sort of creating this position and came at a critical time in our, in our history. And then, let's see, I guess
Special education director.
Special education director. We've already started that search and have been receiving applications. And I guess I would have to editorialize at this moment, if I may, that Nancy Miller and I think we've all appreciated her work, she is by far the best director of special services I've worked with in 40 years. And so I will thank her for her work for us. So we have, we're going to have another busy spring and summer and not to mention a move thrown into that. And there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes with Kim and Nina, trying to just not only project staffing moves, but all the other people that may be coming into our building, even though she's trying to slow us down from going in there. So a lot going on, but it's good work. And then on the horizon, we're in pretty good shape, staying on top of things. At the January meeting, we will have a presentation from the PBL group. And then I think we wanted, as a policy committee, wanted to have a follow-up on the field trip chaperones, so we have a rewrite of the regulations that go with that policy. And then I think Logan has arranged for some of the class of 2016 to come in and they have been, as you have seen with some votes, very generous in gifts to a number of organizations. So we'll have them come in for that meeting as well. I have not yet heard back from anybody in the town on the Sparks Road and Bartlett Road, so I will continue that as just a highlighted question mark until they're ready to come talk to us about that.
Great. And Pauline had mentioned having Mike Irvin in his class.
Yes, I did follow up with that and spoke to Mike Irvin. I thought it might be best for us to maybe meet at 5:30 at the greenhouse rather than have him come in and because it's really a great testament to Mike's work. Bob Little did some work in the background and certainly Bill Mogensen. And it's a pretty neat piece that has sort of gone under the radar with the newspaper.
I didn't know this until I came in during the deadline. Sorry. I think that's great, but I would also love if the students worked on it. I think it would be nice to give them recognition here at the committee.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's possible if they took photographs of the piece, but I mean, for the audience at home, it might be nice just to see some photographs put up.
Right.
I'm not trying to give anybody extra work, but it's beautiful.
Yeah.
I would like to still go in there because I haven't been in there. I just saw it walking up the back ramp and was like, what is that? It's awesome. It's amazing. I could move in there. You could put three teachers in this. My goodness.
It's surprising. It's warm, too. It doesn't have a heater in it yet, but it's surprisingly warm. So they've done a good job.
Outside, it looks beautiful.
And then I, I'm not sure, but Jen was talking to me about the possibility of a building tour, maybe before our second January meeting. Might be, might be a good time if we wanted to do a 5 o'clock tour.
I just went on that last tour with my kids. It was great.
Yeah.
It's amazing how far they've come along.
And one other thing, I wanted to see if we could add a discussion on homework.
Yes, I think I put that on the second January meeting, as a matter of fact.
Oh, okay. I see that. Homework discussion. Perfect.
And that's been a topic at policy and
Homework discussion.
Yes.
Just the discussion.
Can I ask a question kind of around policy? What's the procedure? I would love to have us look at our policy on detention and suspensions.
Yeah.
So is that something I would just ask the policy committee to and then maybe by email?
Sure. That sounds good.
Send you some areas of
Absolutely.
I have questions.
I think that sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. We can meet.
What the procedure was.
Sure. Absolutely. Jen?
Mike, I guess through Jen, I have a couple of questions. The standard-based reports cards, I think the first trimester went out and I know that Dr. Cohen had a meeting with parents. I wasn't able to go to that. I think it would be nice to get some kind of update on how that's progressing and integrating. And then a question came up and I, either you've told me and I don't recall or I haven't heard yet about the crosswalk on Bartlett Road where there was one to the old entrance. Is that moved or is there a plan to have that moved up to the newer entrance?
We have a, we did move the crosswalk down because there was a fence cutting that off and we didn't want people to walk on that side. When that building is opened up, the crosswalk will return to further down the road.
Okay.
Good.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any news?
We had our winter formal on Saturday. It was a really big success. We sold probably around 100 tickets, which was really awesome. And I just want to say a really big thanks to Bobby Lamb. He had langitis, but he still rocks. And Shonda Bartlett, she got tons of decorations for us and it looked awesome. And Steve Turnage, too, who helped us a lot pre-decoration and cleanup as well.
Great. I'm glad it was successful.
Congratulations for pulling it off. It's not easy.
Thank you.
Well done.
Anything else? Zona, anything? No?
Just, I know we're going to have a presentation at the next meeting, but kudos to the PBL, the Project-Based Learning Program. I had an opportunity to go in to the parents arriving, so I got to actually walk around and talk to some of the students as they were doing their presentations and it's pretty impressive. You know, I'm a big one about how kids learn and different learning styles and to hear these kids articulate how they thought that they benefited from the program and how they felt. I mean, one, actually, more than one student said, I said, what did you learn? What was the big takeaway from this class? And they said that other kids have different strengths and other people are things and I am. Sort of that kind of language was the theme throughout, which I thought that's pretty great for, you know, seventh and eighth graders to have that appreciation. So anyway, I was appreciative of the invitation and I look forward to hearing from them next time.
Great. Anything, Melissa?
No.
No? All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just, I know we're going to have a presentation at the next meeting, but kudos to the PBL, the Project Based Learning program. I had an opportunity to go in, to the parents arriving, so I got to actually walk around and talk to some of the students as they were doing their presentations, and it's pretty impressive. You know, I'm a big one about how kids learn and different learning styles, and to hear these kids articulate how they thought that they benefited from the program and how they felt. I mean, one, actually, more than one student said, I said, what did you learn, what was the big takeaway from this class? And they said that other kids have different strengths, and other people are things, and I am, and sort of that kind of language was the theme throughout, which I thought that's pretty great for, you know, seventh and eighth graders to have that appreciation. So anyway, I was appreciative of the invitation, and I look forward to hearing from them next time.
Great. Anything, Melissa?
No.
No? All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.